Mayor Bauer?
Here.
Mayor Protem Renick?
Here.
Alderman Madre?
Here.
Alderman McDermott?
Here.
Alderwoman Jones?
Here.
Alderwoman Joseph?
Here.
Madam Mary, have a good one.
All right. Alderwoman Joseph, we believe this is the pledge of...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please Chief, yeah Chief. Chaplain Nada.
Good evening folks. Thanks for the promotion, Madam Mary. Can you please Mr. Francis on my tail? Tell us prayers guys. Heavenly fathers, we gather here tonight, we lift up our hearts and gratitude for the privilege of serving this wonderful community. We thank you for the dedicated leaders who guide us with wisdom and compassion. We pray for your guidance and blessing upon the mayor, Alder members, and all of those entrusted with the responsibility of making decisions for Jamaica Beach. Great in the strength that leaves with integrity, wisdom to discern what is right, and the compassion to serve all the members of community equitably. May your presence be felt in every decision, discussion, and action taken during this meeting and beyond. Help us work together harmoniously for the betterment of all. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge all the disasters that happened in our country in the last couple of months. Being a beachfront community, we're truly blessed here in Jamaica Beach. Thank you to the leadership that we have, and those men and women who work hard every day for that. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, at this point, do we have any council members that need to announce a conflict of interest? All right, public comment. Ms. Ford? Will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Sean Porch, and I'm here on behalf of John Lamont III, my godson, 16705 Kingston Way. He inherited the house from his father a few years ago. They have been fixing up the house, bringing it to nice community standards. They went through the permitting process a year ago and did a new roof. They went to go through the permitting process this year to redo the deck and handrail, and it's been a nightmare. They started the process in September with a contractor who is a second-generation builder in Jamaica Beach, licensed in the entire state of Texas. When he came to pull the permit, the girl who does the permitting was busy. Somebody else in the office told him to go ahead and start, but don't do more than half the job before he gets the permit. So he stopped with less than half of it done. She came a day later and gave him a ticket for doing more than half, and you can go look at it right now. It's less than halfway done. Then, she basically said that his insurance, which was good for the entire state of Texas, has to specifically say Jamaica Beach on it. So he now has a ticket. Then he had to go get his insurance to put Jamaica Beach on there. And then finally, instead of being given a sheet in the very beginning, here's your checklist, things have changed, right? Which is what should have happened the day he walked through the door, but it didn't. And so, he's coming back for this, he's coming back for that, he's coming back for this. Well, now it's October and the prices have changed on permitting. So basically, instead of being able to pay what September was, permit was, now, which is when the process started and what they should be charged, now they're being charged October prices, $450 to permit renewing boards on the deck, which is just robbery, in my opinion. And they're being charged for two permits, one for the deck and one for the handrail, when it's one project with one contractor. It is just absolutely ludicrous. I'm gonna tell you, he owns property and homes in Jamaica Beach, and he's second-generation builder in Jamaica Beach. He said, "I'm done with Jamaica Beach, I'm out." His family built Parter Seeaw, his family built most of Isla del Sol. He's like, "I'm never building in Jamaica Beach again, this is ridiculous." So this kid's mom has been trying to call the city to find out why she's being charged these prices when her permitting was initiated in September, and they weren't given the information they should have been given in September, otherwise it would have been taken care of in September. And no one will answer the phone. She tried calling everyone in this office in the city for an entire week, and no one has answered the phone. And that's why I'm standing here in front of you today. That is ridiculous and ludicrous, and something's gotta be done about it.
Kendall, can you reach out to this family and see what you can do to find a solution for them?
I can.
Mayor, is that okay? Thank you. Thank you. I believe we had two emailed.
Yes, ma'am. Roof Oslin, 16729 Jamaica Beach Road. I object to a beach user fee. Jamaica Beach owners on the bayside, their families, their guests would be required to pay a fee every time they visited the beach. That is discriminating and unfair. If the beach user fee is adopted, every household in Jamaica Beach should receive a "Get on the Beach" card that can be displayed on a car dashboard. That would at least give access to all residents, their family and friends. Andrea Spearing, 16617 Jamaica Beach Road. One, I want to thank council for allowing the use of Christmas trees for dune restoration. This has been done in Surfside for years. I'm glad we have finally decided to do this. May citizens bring trees to the beach dune area themselves, or must trees be deposited at the JV park and be placed on the beach by the city? Two, regarding the FAQs on beach restoration posted by the city, I'm still confused as to why golf carts are included as a plus-one with a fee for one vehicle. Golf carts will take up space on the beach that another paid vehicle could use. Yes, it's a smaller space, but the fee does not charge more for a large SUV versus a smaller sedan. But the GLO has said both golf carts and cars count as vehicles. Three, I'm still confused about the number of cars planned to be on the beach at any time. I thought the GLO listed one parking space for 15 feet of beach as a requirement. It seems the JV plan submitted has more than that. Could council clarify and explain this? Four, I love the lack of trashcans on the beach. Please consider continuing the "you bring it, you take it home" philosophy. Five, how will pedestrians with tents and chairs be figured into the buff plan? Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next on announcements. Pumpkin decorating is Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the city park. And then also, we have our Halloween Day on October 26th. Alcart parade, followed by truck or treat, as well as since our national night out with our police organization. Then we also have a Halloween costume dance following the truck or treat. And also note, November council meeting dates have been shifted. They're gonna be the first and third Thursday during November, because the fourth Thursday falls on Thanksgiving. So please note that we'll have our October meeting on the 24th and two weeks later, November 7th and November 21st. In December, we'll still just have one meeting. And it'll be on the second Thursday as usual, but fourth Thursday falls during Christmas time, so we won't be having the fourth meeting in December. Okay, next is reports from directors, police and fire. City Attorney Francis, would you like to fill us in from your report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just quickly, the beach user fee, we have posted a second set of answers to the FAQs, and so they're out there for everybody to take a look at, and that completes all the questions that I've received at this time. Just to let everyone know, the bulkhead of the wastewater treatment plant, the contractors done work there. The Blue Santa fundraiser, one of... We have some old, unusable old street signs, and also the wooden trashcan holders from the beach, which will not be reused. We're gonna make them available for sale, and the monies will be donated to the Blue Santa toy fund. So there's more to come on that when we get to that point. Just wanted to kind of give everybody an initial heads up. Just a brief, we're in the process of conducting initial phone interviews for the two open positions, the code enforcement and the utility billing accounts payable position. So we've done several of those this week, and we'll be doing a few more next week. And we have gone live with both the MyGov and the Hack You Fund programs. And we're still training as we go along with this, so... But we're excited to get those projects started. I would stand for questions.
Are we gonna be posting pictures of those trashcan holders?
We will.
At some point?
Yeah.
We'll get keyed up on how we're gonna move them?
Exactly. We're trying to think the logistics behind all of that.
And then we found another... Are we still gonna continue to store the blue trashcans at the wastewater plant?
Probably for right now.
Okay.
We don't have a lot of other options yet.
Okay. Any other questions, Mel?
No.
All right. Chief, anything to add to your report?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Chief? All right. Mr. Keter, for operations?
Yeah, I just have one comment, and Alderwoman Jones told me to say it. We replace a lot of missing signs. In the future, if you see a sign, it's not a decoration for your house, please turn it in. And we've caught a few, and they're not decorations. They cost, those cost almost $90 to $100 apiece, depending from turn to casa de vaca. So they're expensive. So please, we encourage residents to please turn it in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since it was in your report, can we speak a little bit about trees on the beach?
Yes.
Wondering a little more about that. And then also, with the beach re-nourishment taking place, are we planning on doing that this Christmas season? Or how are we gonna coordinate that with the beach re-nourishment, or are we... What are we doing?
We're hoping that that will be finished by the time, because we're not doing this until January.
Well, the beach re-nourishment is kicking off in January, right?
Well...
We don't know that.
We don't know.
Okay. Well, that might be done before then, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. But we're right now working on paperwork for the GLO, because we have to get a permit from them. Rules and regulations that, you know, they don't want anything that's blocked, they want clean trees. Goal is right now to collect them. First, we're gonna get volunteers, because we're gonna use volunteer army to put them places out there. They have to be strung together from tree to tree on the dune line. We have, and we'll be picking them up, placing them in your front yard, we'll pick them up, place them at the... And behind the park, behind the field video in between the fence. They'll stack up nicely there. So that's, that is our plan right now. But what's, we're hoping that the beach re-nourishment is completed. So this will be a part of the dune... The beach starts with this via dune restoration project.
Any questions from council on that?
So you said you have the regulations from the GLO, you spoke into that one?
Yes, they need the permit, they need the layout of where we're going to the beach, we're working on it right now.
Okay, so did we, did we take a vote on that as far as what we were gonna move forward? I thought we were in discussion.
This is for the administration?
No, I'm in session.
Using Christmas trees on the beach.
So there was, there was no vote? I guess I didn't realize that the council thought there would need to be a vote for that.
I don't know, I didn't know if it was resolved, if we all agreed that that was what we were going to do. I mean, we were talking about doing it, I just, I couldn't, I couldn't recollect that we...
I was given a directive to come up with a plan?
There is some money in the budget.
For dune refurbishments?
For the dune restoration area. And some of it will hinge on when the contractor... GLO is still in the process of selecting that contractor. They said that should be finalized this month. And then, then we will know what their schedule is for completing beach nourishment. It would be ideal that, you know, we get... Cool, you know, coordinate for both of them. So if, if the contractor's schedule doesn't really work for this, then we will probably have to postpone to next year.
Okay. All right.
But like Robert referred to, there's work that goes into it. We gotta go through the permitting process, so we can't just wait till the last minute to decide.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're all on board with this, so that was decided.
Well, if, if we need to bring it up for a vote, we'll absolutely do that, I mean, if that's...
Anyone not concerned about Christmas trees?
So is there any environmental impact? Is it, I mean...
It's encouraged.
Does it bother the beachfront neighbors? I know we have a couple of, yes?
This is Pam, Jocelyn, 4401 Kingston Way. And we have a house in Bermuda Beach, and they've done this for the past couple of years. And everybody needs to be prepared, because it's very ugly. They're brown Christmas trees, and they're brown all summer long. And anyway, Bermuda Beach decided not to do it again. In my opinion, and I wasn't part of that, but I could agree with that, because they, the first storm, they were gone. So they didn't really seem to help, but maybe, maybe they will. So it's worth a try, but they, I would think we need to do a little more research to see...
Successes, right?
Yeah. And other places, it hasn't, you know, figured really make a difference, it's very helpful. Because it was a lot of effort, it was all volunteer there, and it was a lot of effort, and didn't mean anything to do much, but...
We used to do it here in Jamaica Beach. When I was a kid, our sculpture was part of it.
But I just hope it's volunteer, so that, you know, it's all volunteer, and the city's not doing it. It should be volunteer, in my opinion. Because...
Community activity.
Community activity, yes.
We could check the Pirates Beach, they started that last Christmas, after Christmas. That was a big thing, they had signs everywhere on the entrances to drop off the Christmas trees, so that would be...
Let's go and see if they're still there. I bet you they're not.
That's a good point, yeah.
That's really not a fair comparison, because the dunes that were there have been there for decades, and they're not there anymore either.
Well, there's some in Pirates Beach West. When we went along and did the drive-through, remember? The hay bales were still there. That's right. So we, we might want to look into, you know, something like that. Well, Chris, anything to help protect our beaches?
Probably combination of things.
And there was the...
Christmas trees with hay bales.
And plants, and there was those plants. Yeah, that's right. It's a really interesting-looking plant, you know, starting.
Among park board trustees, and we encourage that, and there, and there are plans for the coastal beach, urban part beach, or...
Okay.
Are looking into, are starting the plans right now.
For trees, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I haven't experienced it before, and I just, I don't know what the impact is, so I don't know.
As long as it's clean, it's pencil-free, everything's free, it's just a tree.
Okay.
And this is what the GLO was saying, they, we gotta overemphasize that, they don't want blocked trees out there.
Right, okay.
Yeah, for any, basically, they don't allow any non-plant material to be used for dune restoration. So it has to be natural, you can't use plastic stakes to anchor them down, you gotta use wood stakes.
So I can't put my plastic tree on.
When you're trying to get rid of your... We don't, we don't take donations of artificial trees, only the real ones. All right, Chief Aiden?
Good evening. During the third quarter of the year, the park department responded to 86 calls for service. Nine of those calls are mutual aid on automatic aid given, where we assist the Galveston. Three of them were mutual aid received, where we received help from Galveston. At a very high level, four of those calls were fires. Forty-five calls were rescue or EMS calls. Thirteen calls were for hazardous condition with no fire, this would be a gas leak, electrical working, sparking, things like that. Fourteen calls were good intent or false alarms. Ten calls were service calls. Service calls can run again, assisting somebody up the stairs, unlocking a car, things like that. As a comparison, for 2023, for the third quarter, we had a total of 63 calls for service. Fifteen were mutual aid or automatic aid given. Six fires, 35 rescue, emergency services. Eight calls were hazardous condition no fire, eight calls were good intent or false alarms, and six called service calls. So that's kind of, break down what it looked like, this kind of ministry. We responded to five water rescue calls as part of the Galveston Marine Response that goes through the mutual aid calls. We also provided mutual aid on two structure fires with Galveston Fire Department, one on the west end, one was at the punt west, and one was at the Pirates West. They also responded mutual aid to a structure fire in Jamaica Beach that actually, they got disregarded on, because it was caused by an oil cracker that overflowed and started raining the deck. So we got it out pretty quickly, and we disregarded them. They also responded to an electrical issue that originally came in as a structure fire, but once it was gone, we identified it as a electrical issue, and we disregarded them. The boat that was donated by the police department is replaced into service. It's been upgraded with a side scan sonar, clear night vision, and radar to assist with nighttime rescues. As a result of that, we were able to take Marine One, which is our sea legs, out of service and re-merchandise. So now it's been placed, it's also been placed back in service. The benefit of this is we were able to replace the hydraulic motor, so now we can extend the life of that vessel. We are in the process of obtaining new personal protective equipment, mucker coat, mucker pants, helmets, boots, gloves, et cetera. For all of our members, since our current PPE has reached the end of life according to NFPA standards. Just to give you a rough estimate, it costs about $7,500 per person for the PPE put on a fire. We will also be hosting the Galveston County Fire Department Association monthly meeting in November, on the 7th. The parking's gonna be fun, because we like to have representatives from all 14, 17 departments in Canada. So parking may be a challenge on that night. We have submitted a grant to Texas Forestry Service for a surplus 935-ton cargo truck. We think we'll use it as a hot water rescue vehicle. We don't know the timing, the way the TFS works is really strange, so I have a feeling a year or two I'll get a phone call, "Hey, we've got a truck for you." That's how I work the lifetime, I got a grant from there. So, but our plan on that is to hard to repaint it, fix it up, and put in services, hot water rescue. Thoughts and questions?
I just wanted to say, I was gonna do it during my report, but I think it was last weekend, my kindergarten teacher actually fell in and out of her house, I think back on the Hamba Way, maybe? I can't remember, and she called me, and I threw a ladder in my truck headed over there to get her out. And that one minute took me good over there, y'all had three fire trucks and the ambulance already there, so y'all's response time is incredible, so... I didn't even get out, because I didn't want to get in the way, so I'm a great job.
There is a turp in your packet that does call for that. We are well within NFPA standards of our response time averages. Realizing that the one member who looks out of rack is on fire, we show our average response time dispatched to arrival of seven minutes. Realize that when we usually like Galveston, we're frequently going in excess of 10 miles, which is well outside of our response district. But if you look at our EMS response time averages, those are pretty much on par with what you're seeing. So we're getting four minutes to dispatch to arrival, and two minutes for dispatching out.
Good job. That's awesome.
Would it be okay if I went to, I've been to a couple of these big gatherings that you have, would it be okay if I attend?
Certainly.
Okay.
You'll be here anyway, because y'all...
Nobody happy at the same time? That's apparently, yes.
I mean, you start them 670. So if y'all work too long, then you might...
Okay, well...
The meeting parts are getting around 7:30.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I'd also like to put a shout-out of thanks to the volunteer fire department. I mean, I know during budget cycle, I pointed out that we have a very low tax rate compared to... We are the lowest tax rate in Galveston County, with the exception of Clear Lake Shores, which has a lot of commercial activities and different sources of revenue. But one of the reasons we are is because of our volunteer fire department. If, if we were having to pay for all those people that dedicate their time and energy relentlessly to the city, our taxes would be significantly higher. So I know, I know most of you gladly submit your volunteer contribution every month, but recognize it goes to a very good cause, and that volunteer contribution is still a bargain compared to what our tax rate would be if these guys were paid. So anyway, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of minutes. So this is both from the regular city council meeting on September 26th, as well as our special city council meeting discussing the strategic plan on September 30th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as posted?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as posted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as posted from the two meetings, 9/26 and 9/30. All right, thank you. Okay, next comments, reports from members of council. I haven't kept the exact track, we skipped you last time, it's late. But I'm gonna jump over and start with Taz, and we'll start our rotation again. That's great, thank you, Mayor. I'm afraid that, probably like all of you, I've been glued to the news about Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Milton. My heart breaks for them who have lost loved ones. I pray for the families that now start the recovery process, and for our first responders who are true heroes. While watching, I saw a clip of a North Carolina State Highway Patrol showed the video where they were using Starlink in their patrol cars to communicate while trying to rescue the victims. Starlink is the only reason they were able to communicate with each other after the hurricane. All other communications in lots of these counties are probably gone. Florida is relying on Starlink a lot now, too. Mayor, I want to let you know how much I appreciate you for the forethoughts for investing in Starlink for our city. And with any future emergency, City Hall can still stay in contact with our citizens and with the outside world. Next, David and his crew have been painting stop signs on the asphalt at all of the corners. I'm hopeful that that will be a reminder for some of us, some of our speedy Gonzalez's that go around the city, to be, you know, a nice reminder, and they've done a nice job, thank you. And the mayor made me the park and pool liaison, that means I get to work with Tina. And this morning, Tina and I had a very productive meeting about the parks, the pool, and the park events. We have a great idea, and she wanted me to present tonight. We will be asking our veterans who live here to send pictures of yourself in uniform at your... I didn't ask you about this, but I'm gonna suggest this. Add your name, rank, branch, and the years that you served. The city will have those pictures made into a sign, a good-sized sign, that we can place along 30005 or wherever we have permission to put them. And everyone that passes along 30005 will know that our city appreciates and celebrates and honors our veterans. Because Veterans Day is November 11th, everyone. And we'll reuse those every year and now to them, because I'm not sure this is first try. So pictures will be, will need to be emailed to Tina before Monday, October 21st at noon. This will give us time to get the signs made. More about this will be made available on the city website and on social media. Tina, appreciate your ideas, your energy, your enthusiasm, and your love for the people of Jamaica Beach. I'm excited to start working with you. So of course, the mayor already mentioned them, but Saturday, 9:00 a.m., we'll be decorating pumpkins. And I'd like to invite council to be there, and to, and everyone that's, and everyone to come to our park events. Thank you, Mayor.
I pretty much said mine, but I also wanted to extend the same kudos to Chief here. The police were the same incident in record time, it was great, so great to have.
The only comment that I had was on September 26th, the Texas Brotherhood Rite event occurred here at City Hall outside, and it was a fantastic event in memory of fallen first responders, one of whom was Galveston first responder. And the Rite... And the riders, I can't remember how many miles that they had actually ridden here.
Five hundred and seventy.
Five hundred and seventy miles. It's a tremendous volunteer effort and for the charity event to raise money for the families of the fallen. And so as sad as the event was, the participants, the riders, the cyclists, many of which came up to me and said that we gave them the warmest welcome of any city that they'd stopped that in Texas. So I think, you know, it was fabulous to hear, so good job, everybody that participated and put that together. So I'm very proud to hear that we did that for them. That's all I had.
Alderman Madre?
I might even think perhaps the comment on where we're going to sell the trash barrel stands and the hope to keep the barrels. Since barrels July twenty-eighth, we've only, I checked the chief, we've only had about twelve hundred cars on the beach. So a real peak season, then we'll understand and develop something to take care of trash and litter. So I wouldn't be too quick to dispose of things and then have to buy them back. That's all.
Do you want to speak to that?
I can speak to that. So the plan would be if we chose, well, the council seemed to indicate that if we did decide to put trash cans back on the beach, that we would look to contract with the Galveston Park Board for trash collection. They do not utilize the holders.
That is true.
They only place the barrels straight on the beach. If we did something different, I would not recommend using the holders either. I would recommend a style, a don't style like the state park uses. So regardless in what avenue we take, I don't think there will ever be a need for the holders.
That's good, I just wanted to really think about it and it's like we have.
Yeah.
Open to different, open to different solutions.
Also.
I just think one thing isn't the answer.
Also, when a storm comes, it's very challenging to get those off the beach. When we didn't get them off of the beach in time for Alberto, picking them up out of the dunes and digging them out of the surf was a costly endeavor as well. So we really like the style of the state park. Kendall and I went over there and looked at it along with JBSC chairman and their swinging idea is much easier for our staff to empty it if we go back to doing it ourselves. But we had talked to council about liking what Galveston Park Board suggested to us. Okay, Alderman Madre?
I just have one thing. I want to thank Mayor and the city council for recognizing and declaring October as domestic violence awareness month. So it's a really important time, so I'd really like to encourage anybody that if you see something, not just say something, but do something. It's very important to do something because there's too much vulnerability in our communities. And, you know, you can always contact our National Domestic Violence Hotline. It's a national number, started in Texas by the way. And that number's eight 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 nine one nine, safe. So please, thank you.
Okay, next to old business, we are to discuss, consider and take action to approve the proposed organizational chart. Kendall, you can slide that up for us. Do I have a motion to discuss the org chart?
I have a motion to discuss.
Can you go up second? I'll stop in a minute. All right, Kendall, you want to?
Yeah, so following the last meeting when we made the first proposal, the city council had asked for some potential changes. I'm going to have to make this a little bit smaller so you can see the whole thing. We've talked about the inclusion, I'll just start up here at the top, the inclusion of our judge and prosecutor and the fire chief, which the fire chief is there, but we added the dotted lines to kind of represent that although they're part of the organization, they're not completely. Mayor, city council, we had talked about that. Police chief, we also talked about listing those positions underneath. So we have lieutenant, sergeant, the four police officers and the twenty-five reservists. Beyond that, everything else essentially stayed the same. There is a second where we've added the actual names of the people that are in those positions today. That it was suggested that maybe that's the one that we post on the website, the ones that includes the names with it. So that's the only real change that you'll see. Of course, our code enforcement and the utility bill accounts payable has not been filled yet, so we're to be named later. But that's essentially essential what I have. So I would ask for the feedback here if you see additional changes you wanted to add. But I think the changes that we made encompass everything that was discussed in our last meeting.
Hi, Detective, this is really good to him. If I had a wish list, I'd look at him going, oh no. But, you know, one day maybe we could even add pictures of that way. You know, when employees are out, you know, people might be able to know. We could talk about making it a hot link, right? So that if the org chart had a hot link, because we do have pictures posted, right, for each of those positions and the description and the departments. So maybe we could do a hot link that would take you straight to their, huh?
Photo and profile.
Yeah, we have that now.
But I'm saying you could link it.
Yes, yeah, we should help. Or put pictures.
So that means you've got a life there?
Awesome. I think it helps the citizens to have, that's why we put the pictures out there originally. We just didn't have an approved org chart to attach.
Do we have pictures of us or did you get pictures of us or?
Yeah, we do need to add that.
Glamour shots.
Glamour shots, yeah. I don't think we put that in the budget. Then do I have a motion to approve the org charts?
I'll make the motion to approve.
One second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the org chart? With pictures on the agenda, with pictures. Well, that one we're not approving, right? I mean, we just approved the face, the names can change without council approval. So the one we're actually approving is the one we have the position stated. Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion, consideration and take action on the rehabilitation of the wastewater treatment plant clarifier. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make the motion to discuss the clarifier rehabilitation project.
One second.
All right, Kendall, do you want to key up the conversation?
I can, I can try. So again, this was a discussion that was started last time and we asked to, that it be tabled until tonight. And from the last discussion, the sticking point seemed to be that council wanted some kind of guarantee, for lack of a better word, and we'll say quote unquote guarantee, that the work that is performed, that is outlined in the proposal, that when that work was completed, that we would have a fully functional clarifier capable of treating wastewater. And so we went back and visited with branch construction to get a better understanding of exactly what was included in their bid, exactly what would be needed to provide that, that they would ensure that we had a fully functional clarifier. And we worked through that and they presented, like I said, a little further down, I apologize. We talked about it. They presented a new project proposal. You'll see a reduced cost, forty thousand one twenty-six. And then I went through and I highlighted the changes from their original scope of work to what they are proposing now. And essentially, a couple of things that were removed or changed. We'll just start this section here. They were proposing that we use stainless steel in this section of tow tube, but they realized that since it will be submerged, using ductile iron would still be sufficient because you're going to have the weathering, the deterioration when it's in air. But since it remains submerged, that they felt comfortable that it did not need to be stainless steel, so we were able to see it deduct there. A couple of things that were taken off, it says install aluminum tow boards on a catalog. That was something that they, for safety reasons, they wanted, that's why it was originally included. However, that is not necessary to make that clarifier work, so we asked them to remove that from that. They also, when they first originally made that proposal that we received, they had some other work that they've been able to complete since that time. One of these was the valve in the corner. Also, they're removing the mister, which is a basically water line on top, for lack of a better word, a sprinkler system on top of the clarifier to, that sprays and helps keep down foam and bacteria growth. They'd also, this handle here, this twenty-two foot valve handle, they had completed that. And then there was some question about a totalizer. I think Alderman Madre had brought that up. And there is a need for a totalizer to be installed. The one that's existing is only partially there, it's not a working totalizer and it would be outdated even if we were to just reconnect it. So this does include the addition of a brand new totalizer to match the one that is on the other side of the newer side of the plant. And so as some total of this, we saw a reduction from approximately forty-seven thousand down to forty thousand one twenty-six. And that they are willing to say that yes, once this is completed, you will be able to. It will not be optimal against some things like the tow boards that some of the handrail replaced. Could still be used, there's still work to be done to, you know, to enhance the safety up there. But the clarifier would be operational. Mayor, is there anything else that I've forgotten at this session?
No, I mean, we did go out and walk through for really several hours, looking at the proposals and what to do. We did check into composite material.
Yeah, non- metallic, yeah.
Monthly material for brackets and sourced those. And they come in parts, you have to cut and connect them by the time you have the labor for that. And ours aren't that big or that mini. The general feeling, even from the person we reached out to for the price quote, was that, you know, stainless is usually cheaper installed just because they come already bracketed to size and you don't have to construct them on site.
They did agree that the life expectancy would be significantly longer, but they're typically metal brackets coated with fiberglass coating. So for, but they did say that, you know, it might last longer, but no significant cost savings.
All right, what was the difference in price with the tow tube being stainless steel?
Well, that's.
I did not ask.
Yeah, that's about the, that was about a ten thousand.
Oh, it was, okay.
Dollar difference because we had to add the cost of the totalizer to the project.
Right.
And these other components that they fixed, they're just not very costly. And Branch continuously has been, you know, in contact with Branch, Esther, you're going to have to help me. I never can remember these numbers, twenty-three thousand five hundred a month. For twenty-three six, for our monthly contract with Branch. Out of that, we get a.
Fifteen thousand.
It's a change, too. It's like fifteen three. I don't think it's straight fifteen, is it? Okay, straight fifteen, okay.
It is fifteen thousand.
Okay, we get a fifteen thousand dollar credit towards repairs. So as it nears the end of the month, if Branch has not had to do excessive water line repairs, they work with Robert and Kendall to identify areas because we pay it or we use it or lose it. It doesn't roll up. So a lot of this, some of this work has been done in conjunction with just their regular maintenance of the plant.
So that's just people money and so whether it's labor cost or material, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
They can even take it and paint it. They can swing out, dig it.
Yeah.
The promiscuous.
And you go concrete.
They had, I mean, they, like I said, they work with Robert and Kendall every month and come forward with, hey, we're quite used up here. We're behind in our credit this month. What do you want to spend money on?
Yeah, okay.
No, we're not spending any more money, but what do you want to focus our time on?
So basically, anything that ran beyond this, if something came up, we could apply those funds towards?
Yes, if there were excess funds that month, yes, we could do that.
And that's really how we got to the point that we're at now. This has been ongoing work for the past several months, probably the last year.
Too much, I think, really.
Well, and either before that, just cleaning out and figuring out just what was actually working, how about it? So if we'd have started from the very beginning, this number would have been significantly higher.
Sure.
They've been using crews that are around and using part of our credit when it was to clean it up. So, yeah, because otherwise, I mean, it was a mess. It was full of many, many years of muck on the bottom. Even to get to the pipes and understand what we need to do and not do has been an effort.
Sure.
But I do need to point out that to move forward with Branch, our procurement policy would, we don't have three bids.
Right.
So it would require council basically to agree to moving it forward, understanding that it would constitute a bit of an emergency repair. We had a failure on the existing running plant about, what was it about a month ago, Kendall? An airline vacuum device failed. And we had to shut the plant down. They were able to get it repaired, but also when this happens, we pump sludge, we pump inlet into the downside and use it as storage holding and then move it over to the other side. So, but it was touch and go. If, you know, we had backup plans to start hauling our waste off because that, and then what they found when they did have to get in there and clean that area to repair that section, it's pretty obvious that that side of the plant has not been maintained for as long as the other side's been down. So we really are at a critical point because the other plant is starting to have failures.
I think.
And.
That's probably the only possibility. We only have to have electricity, light, bugs, light and irrigation.
Space to do it.
And actually, when we were there doing this, looking at this, the aeration on the working side, we had some issues with the ratch chamber was not in operation at the time. They were bypassing and making do to operate.
They were bypassing and making do to operate the way that they work. So.
But we have a backup aerator. I mean, we have the mainline aerator, right? And we have a backup unit, right beside it?
Um, no.
No, I'm, I don't.
No.
Now, according to our contract with Branch, there's a fixed amount of markup that they can apply to what's sourced, correct?
Yeah.
So I just want to be clear that everyone here understands that and the public understands that, that they can't just raise the price. They have to fully expose what they're paying for this equipment that we're talking about. And they've got a certain amount of markup, so they can't exceed, correct?
Well, this is our town, right?
Yeah.
And also, this, this side of the sewer plant's been down since Hurricane Ike, correct?
Yeah, it's run.
That's eighteen years of mayors and city councils that have not been able to get that thing up and running. And we have a chance here tonight to approve it, which is one of the three big issues in the last election. This thing, short-term rentals on the beach, and we've addressed some of those. And I think we pass this, we've accomplished a huge thing. It hasn't been done in eighteen years. It gets us out of the emergency zone, which we've been hanging by the skin of our teeth, hoping something doesn't break. And now, we pass this, we know at least that that can be something we're not worrying about while we fix up other parts of the treatment plant. And also allows us to be able to breathe a little bit and discuss some other issues. So I think this is a.
Hopefully.
Oh, yes.
Hopefully.
Is it what?
I said hopefully. Hold your breath.
If the food doesn't hit the fan.
And I don't disagree with anything that you have to say. And I, I myself have thought about this and I looked at, you know, what they're proposing. And my thought process on it was this, that all of this needs to be replaced anyways. So regardless of, at the end of the day, you know, if it functions for a while, then we're ahead of the game. If we have to do more, then we have to do more. But this is something we won't have to do once we've identified something else that fails.
Yeah, even if this gets done, like you said, and other stuff needs to be done, we still need to do that other stuff. But this has to be done first anyway.
That's right.
No.
That's right.
Mayor, this is the best I can understand it. I've only been there once, but the best I can understand is that this is something, like you say, that other council have not done the maintenance that needed to be done over all these years. And just to keep the, the one side going, they've just been, my turn, they've just been using bubble gum and shoelaces to keep it all together. So now we can finally use this side so that we can do proper maintenance with the original side that has been overworked for all these years since I. So now we can get this one started. And then we can, we will still have to continue to do more work.
Yeah, that's right. And, and, you know, the plan is, once we get this side up and running and we have confidence in, in its function, then we'll take the other side down during off-season, right? And clean it out and figure out whatever preventive maintenance task we're needing on that side. And then, and then we will put a routine schedule together. We're either on an annual or, you know, we will work the plan to go side to side to make sure that, that everything stays clean and functional.
Let's go back to the contract. Their contract we're talking about is kicking that off. And their contract, Branch's contract, they, to operate the sewage treatment plant. They're not talking about refurbishing the sewage treatment plant, the old side. They're talking about their contract. There are five months left in their contract.
No, it's a three-year contract.
Excuse me?
It's a three-year contract.
The one I got, it says it, maybe I've got the wrong contract. If we change it?
We looked it up and it was three years, right?
So I, I just sent it to you today. I didn't even look at the, it's, it's the one that's in my desk drawer. So I didn't even look at the.
We, we looked at it here recently.
Is it, it was approved at a council just before I was, I.
Yeah, no, no, almost a year before. It was, it was end of February of twenty-three is when the contract was signed.
Okay, okay.
Twenty-seventh of February twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna read it. Okay. This agreement is subject to acceptance by the service provider. It takes effect on the date written above and continues in effect for one year and will remain forth the after, like your power bill, right? And like your electrical bill at home. With automatic annual renewal, okay, at then prevailing rates. And do cancel and write a EVA card. If canceled, the unearned portion of any advanced payment will be credited to the fund. This is a one-year contract. And is that to read?
Yeah, when I read it, it appeared that there was a year and a half remaining.
Did it renew in February twenty-four?
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, it's.
Twenty-seventh of the.
It would already do it. But I, I thought it was a three-year contract, which, which means we have another year and a half.
That's what I thought, yeah. When I looked at it, it was after noon.
It has three years in the contract.
No, we've got five months left in it. And in that five months, we're gonna have to pay him another seventy-five thousand dollars. Just fifteen, five times fifteen, right?
Well, our contract with him is actually for twenty-three thousand, six hundred a month.
Yeah, but I'm saying that fifteen thousand, is it total?
Yeah, it's twenty-three thousand five hundred a month, six hundred a month. And we get, we get a fifteen thousand.
We pay them front-end, we pay them front-end.
Yes.
We pay them, looks like thirty-six thousand six hundred dollars a month.
No, no, no. We pay twenty-three thousand six hundred a month to Branch.
So we, these two don't get added together?
No.
Okay.
No. And then there's a credit out of that twenty-three six towards nonroutine work.
So, and if we don't spend that money?
We lose it.
We lose it. So what that means to me is if there's seventy-five thousand dollars sitting there on the table, that we could use to fix anything on that, including, including refurbishing.
Well, that's if we don't, if we, we typically have two leaks a month, two, three water leaks a month. So there are emergency things that take place that eat into that credit month. So, you know, some months, we spend a lot more than that based on what rates.
Spend it because no loser.
And, well, I will say that they have, they're not really held to the use of or lose of. They have rolled over a couple of those stored up. You know, if we knew we had a project come up, they, they were storing up some monthly credits. So, so they have not held to the use or lose it.
Yeah.
Um, okay. No, no comment. I'm sorry with that one. No comment.
At, at this point, I feel we should move forward and, and authorize Branch to do the work and get the other side of the plant running.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm against that. And, and I, and for good reason. Part of it is that it's in violation of our, of our procurement policy. And it really is.
And I, if, if, if you were getting, if you were getting the, the calls of near misses, like I get them.
Excuse me?
If you were getting the regular calls on near misses where we're about to have to spend, how much is a Magna Flow truck, Kendall? Six? And then they don't even like to take the straight water.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about our procurement policy.
I know, but I'm saying that our procurement policy allows council to, you know, to say this constitutes an emergency repair.
I know.
And.
Our policy specifically says what an emergency repair is, and this doesn't qualify.
I, I disagree with you.
I disagree.
I think that this is, if we, if we don't have a, a working wastewater treatment plant, it's gonna cost us a whole lot of money to get rid of it. And it, it will probably end up costing a whole lot more to fix what's already broken. We've got to maintain what we've got.
That's right. It keeps breaking. We need to fix it. We need to fix.
And I think with Brian, what you described earlier, this has been going on a long time. And too many administrations, we gotta be the one that says let's get it done.
Yep.
Well, most importantly, before you go on, Gil, I mean, we're at a critical point here. And we can't, we can't absorb, let me finish. We're at a critical point here where we can't absorb another disaster and have a non-functioning wastewater treatment plant. And we only have one side of it working. So what I'm saying is, if we can spend the money now on things that we're already gonna have to spend money on already, to me, that's, that's critical to get it functioning.
But will that give us, will that actually give us an operating, functioning?
Yes.
Will it? How about over electrical problems?
Okay, so.
What's the next sole source project?
Doesn't give us a perfect one. It gives us an operating one that still needs repairs and other areas, but at least it would be more.
Gives us some breathing room. We can't spend the time on exactly what you're talking about.
Here's the thing, I'm okay with it. I, I'm not at all comfortable with violating our purchasing.
We're not violating anything.
Yes, we are.
No, we have an, an emergency purchase provision in our procurement policy.
This group section eleven for emergency purchases. In emergency conditions, this one is a threat to public health, safety, welfare, et cetera. When immediate, when immediate response, immediate response is necessary to prevent further damage, all right? The condition, it says, is it a delay which results in significant financial impact to the city. The condition must create an immediate and serious need for supplies, equipment, material, and services that cannot be met through normal procurement methods, okay? And lack of which would threaten the function of the city government. The city administrator shall only execute an emergency purchase of the work qualifies an emergency and does not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's for Kendall to approve.
And I think everything you've read and looking at the nods, everything you just read is emergency right now. We need to take care of this. And I think as a council and with the mayor and our city administrator, we also have the opportunity to change policy. I mean, we can, at that, we can.
But at the same time, we have stewardship of our citizens' tax money.
Well, I think, I think all of us.
Guarantees that stewardship.
But I think.
I think all of us.
Now, wait a second.
All of us, all of us want to be able to poop and not have to dig a hole in the sidewalk.
I knew you guys wouldn't be happy with this, okay? But I also want to say this. What we need is a functional waste treatment plant that can operate, where the original side can operate. You were telling me, Mayor, and the rest of us here, that if we do this and we spend, this is a lump sum contract. Is that not correct? And we spend, this is seventy thousand dollars.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Excuse me?
Forty thousand. Forty thousand seven hundred?
Yeah. Whatever it is, I missed it.
It's forty thousand. Forty thousand.
Okay, we spend this money, we will, we will be able to go in there and commission that and be able to commission that clarifier when they're finished and treat waste and dump it into the thing. I love it. I'm good. But only on that condition, that we don't pay no more money. We don't use this seventy-five thousand dollars pledge fund, okay, to pay for more work to make that happen. Fair enough.
We have, we have. We've looked at the plant multiple times and the work they proposed will get in there.
He comes in.
Now, saying that.
It's all included, forty thousand dollars.
We've gone out and.
I'm good.
Okay. But understand, this.
No, I understand. This is it. That's the money we go in, they hit the electrical switches, they run it, and we run, we treat waste to spec.
Yep.
I'm good.
They, all of the, all of the electrical components, the clarifier will terms. And the other parts of the plant have a common inlet and those parts are.
I'm great with it.
It doesn't, this doesn't require electrical interface. Now, there is another project that we'll be bringing forward to council here in the near future. We know we need another generator. The generator runs the whole plant.
I heard you were gonna completely redo the electric system at the plant.
We have, yes. We.
Is this gonna be in a sole source?
No.
That's standing.
No, because it's, that part's not failing. It's just.
It's not. It's a never source.
We've got open conduits, we've got.
I just don't want our culture, I don't want our culture, okay, to be one, you know, where we do things that is not good stewardship.
Absolutely. I absolutely agree.
This thing is called.
But I think with stewardship also tries to take care of your citizens and make sure that, that everything's operational and functional. That's good stewardship. And we may have to spend money to do that. Every year that we keep not doing this, not doing it, it's only gonna get worse.
Oh, it's a good deal. If, if that's what.
It's only gonna get worse. We, you have to spend money to help this.
And we have to continually improve and continually maintain.
And that is good stewardship. Everybody here, that's good stewardship.
It's all been clean.
Should we make some motions?
Yes, I was gonna say, yeah. Do I have, do I have a motion to approve the branch proposal?
I'll say.
I will say.
Okay, all in favor of approving the branch proposal? All opposed?
I'm opposed. I'm opposed based on, I just don't think we're gonna get it done for that.
Okay, next on the agenda is new business. Discussion, consideration, and take action to appoint the council designate to the Houston-Gallaston area council. Do I have a motion to discuss?
Motion to.
So you guys all know what the, well, the Gallaston, Houston-Gallaston area council is an organization. We're a member and we don't have to, but we have the opportunity to have a representative. So it has to be elected official, so it's gotta be one of us sitting up here. Like I said, we don't have to. So I'm, I'm kind of asking, is there a volunteer who would like to participate and be our representative on the Houston-Gallaston area council?
What are the commitments?
Um, really, it's whatever you want it to be. Like I said, we don't, we don't have to participate with an official designate, but, you know, gets the opportunity to share information.
That's where we went for that class.
Yes.
There is a, is, there are letters that does speak about a dinner meeting for Thursday, November seventh, which is now a council member, council meeting night. But, um, they did not, I had requested, you know, some, some more information about what the requirements.
Do they need monthly or? They do need monthly, I think.
But I don't know that it's in person.
It's like pre, pre-covened issue.
But I think it's remote.
Three, five, five, ten minutes.
Yeah. It's an area different.
Yeah. So, so it's, it's one of those things that it, you know, to have a representative that could attend when, when they're available to attend would be nice. But, you know, just, just someone to kind of stay in the loop and connected.
It has, it has a wealth of resources.
Yes.
Uh, funding that comes down from the federal government, it's called COT, council of governments. And it has resources galore. Any funding that comes from the federal government comes from the state, it, it doesn't enter the COTs. And this is where you apply for, for grants for the police department, grants for the fire department, grants for the fire department, things. It's a great function of government.
Man, so does that mean that you have to attend, I mean, to go to these meetings? I can get all the information from the website or from emails they'll send? Well, I'll volunteer. I don't have to go off the island. I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve Alderman Jones as our Houston-Gallaston area council designate? I'll make that motion to approve Alderman Jones to be our designee to the HCG.
It's like a perfect choice. I say.
Well, that was the motion to appoint, yeah, we proved it. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is we're gonna kind of revisit it again. Kendall, you'll pull it up. Just another review of the city council liaison roles and the code of ethics for elected and appointed officials. Kendall, do you wanna kick us off on this?
Which one, which one do you want up first, Mayor?
Oh, the liaison roles.
Okay. So, yeah, I do have something to start off. So, I would like to sincerely apologize to Pam Jocelyn for the situation that occurred earlier this year involving a city council member's action. I deeply regret the impact this violation of confidentiality had, particularly with the sharing of unsubstantiated information that caused harm to a valued city employee. It's a breach of trust that should never have happened, and I understand the distress that it caused. Since this incident, steps have been taken to ensure such a violation does not happen again. We thoroughly reviewed the actions taken by myself, the mayor, and city council, and have implemented several corrective measures. First, we have reinforcing the adherence of the City of Jamaica Beach personnel policy to protect the rights of all employees and ensure fair treatment. We have, the city personnel have received education on the proper handling of public information requests to safeguard both employees' and privacy rights. If there are any concerns about sensitive information, we will seek a ruling from the Texas Attorney General before releasing any data to the public. Third, we will conduct a yearly review of the council code of ethics for all elected and appointed officials to promote public confidence in the integrity of our government. Before, we are committed to taking prompt action when ethics violations occur and will review and update the ethics policy to ensure enforcement of future violations. Again, I'm truly sorry for the embarrassment to sensitive cause. Please know that we are taking these less seriously and working diligently to prevent any future occurrences.
Thank you. Thank you, Kendall. Okay, so with that, with that in mind, looking at the liaison roles. Kendall, if you'll go down the next one. So, first of all, a reminder of what, what you all signed up for. And also to use this point, we don't have to discuss it now, but if, if any of you see any areas that, that we don't have covered here, but we think it might be a gap, let me know. And we can, we'll be happy to expand your role. Okay. Did everybody have the chance to remember? Okay, next, so we went over this before, but going over it again. Right, the liaison responsibilities, it doesn't mean you get to boss staff around or tell staff what to do regarding your areas of concern. I know that's a big disappointment to all of you. But basically, as we went through our strategic planning exercises, I know a lot of you, you have taken this very seriously, all of you have. And the input you had and the way you have focused and paid attention to learn about your areas, I'm truly impressed with. So, you know, that is one of the roles, is to continue to contribute to the development and implementation of strategic plans. And then stay updated, right? So, one of the latest industry trends and best practices. And, you know, here's the main point, in collaboration with the city administrator, right? Identify and bring forward with those ideas. You know, of course, obviously, if you wanna brainstorm with, with staff around some ideas, but it needs to be coordinated through Kendall. And then, you know, we need to stay mindful of staff time and always, always coordinate with the city administrator. So, on citizen engagement, you do need to facilitate that citizen input. We, we want citizens to bring forward ideas in areas to improve. And, you know, having these designated areas, you know, so if a citizen brings forward an idea and it's in another council member's area, you know, well, connecting those two or helping to facilitate that sharing of ideas is encouraged. Alright, so anyway, just a reminder, you know, the main thing here is to say, you know, this doesn't, doesn't give any council member the right to dictate and control in this area. It's, it's just a point to help bring forward good ideas.
So, responsibility without authority.
Exactly. You got it. Okay.
Can I, can I add something?
Absolutely.
And respectfully, there might be times that you're disappointed with the answer I provided. I, you know, I encourage the great ideas, but sometimes they're not, they're not gonna be feasible for whatever reason. So, there will be times that I'll probably have to say no, or not right now.
Or let's factor it into our strategic plan for year three.
Yeah. Something along those lines. And, and, you know, just again, you know, and this will probably come up, you know, in the next discussion, just about, you know, I have no problem with you visiting the staff. They should be able to talk to you about anything they do and why they do it. Just to, just to remind you that you can't tell them what to do. You have one employee, and that's me, and the rest of them are my employees. And as long as we can keep that, you know, that separation of responsibilities, you know, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna thrive.
Now, since I've worked with Tina, you have to give me a little, a little more direction. I'm not gonna ever boss her around. But, you know, I need to kind of have an idea of how much I need to go, we need to go through you before we make a decision for the park.
Well, and I will, I will also tell you that there's not one of them that are talking to you without them letting me know you talk, they talk to you. And so, I, you know, I will, I will learn that you guys talk. And, and, you know, and, and some of the things will be dictated by, by budget.
Sure.
Unfortunately, you know, those things are, there are certain restraints. And we have other, you know, whether it be events or just whatever, I mean, we're, we're still gonna follow the strategic plan as far as the priorities that you as a group initiate. And, you know, if, if the council as a whole decides to change those priorities to, to include something that you've brought up new, then, you know, then we can look at it. But, but until that happens, you know, we're gonna put together a strategic plan. We're gonna follow that as our roadmap.
Okay, we're gonna pull up the code of ethics. And, and I, I hope all of you have signed the code of ethics and turned it in. Reminder that that is required. So, next slide. You know, once again, our, our ethics policy is here to ensure public confidence in, in our integrity. So, you know, it helps us do all of these things listed. We follow both the letter and spirit of the law. We're impartial and fair. We never use this office for our personal gain, except the shirt drawer. And we conduct ourselves in an atmosphere of respect and civility. And I do, I do appreciate this council for, for the open conversations and discussions we have.
Amen.
Okay, next. You know, remember, we're a small city, and our actions always reflect on the city. And in public meetings, we treat each other with that respect. Both, both in private settings as well, public and private. Alright, next, Kendall. So, if you need something done, like you need to send a letter on behalf of the city, or, you know, any correspondence you want, we always need to check the city staff and Kendall before, before we actually act on behalf of the city. So, keep that in mind. And, you know, make no promises on behalf of the city, the council, or a board or commission. You know, it's, it's the council that makes these decisions, not you as an individual council member. So, be, be careful of what, what we offer and tell citizens we can do and not do. And, and be clear about, are you representing the city, or is this a personal opinion? And remember, our boards, they serve the community, not individual council members. And let's be respectful of diverse opinions. I, I think we do a good job of that here. And then the city administrator, he is the official spokesperson for the city. Alright? Do not use social media in a manner that violates the public, the Texas Public Information Act. As council members, y'all could be privy, you know, both through executive session as well as access to information that is protected under the Public Information Act. So, never should any of that be, be put forward in, in any, anything, but especially not on social media platforms. Alright? So, engagement with staff. As Kendall said, anytime you can come in and ask routine operational questions, you know, like, Robert, why did we put that sign on the beaches this time, right? Or, or when is that gonna be installed? What's the status of that? You know, asking status updates of, of staff, you know, that's absolutely fine. You can request anything from them that's easily available and readily available to the public. You can request unique information, but let's not put staff in a difficult position where they're asked to discuss or give an opinion on an issue. That puts them in a, in a difficult spot. And if it's not readily available to the public, talk to Kendall about it. Because if it involves work on their behalf, he needs to know what, what they're doing, that they have the capacity and their day to do it. And if you do have a, if you do need to meet with staff, let Kendall know. And, 'cause he can help facilitate that meeting and also, you know, make sure that they have the capacity to do that. Alright? You know, never criticize an employee in public. I mean, we can all get mad and irritated with people at times, but we have to be mindful that, that we represent the city. And if we criticize our employees, we're criticizing ourselves at the same time. And do not attempt to influence staff on the making of appointments, what they purchase, where they purchase, any selection of consultants, you know, payment or granting a license or permits. That's city staff's job. And once again, limit requests for staff support. Elected officials who intentionally and repeatedly do not follow proper conduct, they can be, if you've read the policy, there's kind of a three, three-pronged approach. They can be reprimanded, they can be formally censored through council in an open meeting. And, and then there's steps to follow, but they can be removed from office. So. And then those are the resources, once again, about Texas law that applies to government, activity, government interaction, public information requests, and the Texas code, as it applies to all the other things, abuse of office, conflict of interest, all of the other things that elected officials are required to adhere to state law. Alright, any questions, comments? Alright. Thank you. Okay, next is my mayor's report. And Kendall did mention it, but we were having some blower issues at the wastewater plant. The one blower was removed, that's when we were down to one, and it was starting to give out. So, apologize to the citizens for a bit of a different environment for a few days based on the wind direction. But the new, the new, the replaced blower is in, the other one was hauled off. And I don't know, you have an updated schedule, Kendall, on with the other one?
No.
Took about a month to get the last one in, disposed this one too.
I have a question. I, I read it. I hadn't, I'd read it on the report from Grant when we first started. It said that we had a backup blower.
Yeah, we do. No, we don't. It's an installed. We have two installed, and each one runs both sides of the plant.
It's a redundant spare.
Yeah, we have a spare.
It's an installed-
An installed spare, that's what I said.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I wanted to make sure you didn't think we had one in a warehouse somewhere.
Oh, no, 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 an installed spare was what the report said.
Yes, we do.
So, that one's running, and we're gonna have the other spare. The one that will become the spare of the year.
Yeah, and actually calling it a spare is not really correct. We actually run one for a while, then run the other for a while. We don't run one to failure and then start the other one.
I understand.
Yeah, but, anyway, just to, just to let the, just to let-
The old canny service.
Yeah, just to let the city know that, you know, we're aware that there were a few days of less than pleasant-
Is that due to both of them being done?
No. They, they were both impacted.
It was just a reduction of volume of air that we were able to-
Yeah, and if you don't, you don't put enough air in, the bugs don't eat enough. The bugs don't eat enough. And, yeah, and it does get smelly. And we were, we were having to adjust flow, so we couldn't send air to, to all three parts of the plant that get air. We had to cut, like we said, the RAS, the RAS, the digester had air, but the, the RAS tank didn't. And that's where the smells were coming from. So, we, the one blower is fully functioning again, the other one is often being rebuilt.
When would we get it back?
I, we don't have an exact date yet. The other one took about three, three weeks to get repaired, three, four weeks.
And I hate to even say it, 'cause I don't honestly remember.
And they haven't turned in yet to see that, you know, we're just now tearing into it, and we'll be able to give us a quote and a timeline. Then the other thing I wanted to mention is we did have another strategic meeting on the thirtieth. Thank you, council. And we are working those, I condensed all the information based on our conversations. Kendall is going through it and putting what, what he feels are the priorities for that. We'll be sending that out again in another week or so.
I've heard your comment this weekend.
And then, we'll be sending that out for y'all's input. And, and then, I don't know if it'll happen at the next council meeting. Might be the council after that, 'cause we need to give you a week to provide your input. And then, I'm, I'm trying to avoid having to have another full special meeting, but we can just do it in part. We'll add it on the agenda, on, on meetings, and be able to knock it out. And then get that, definitely the prioritized plan for this year. And then we've got bucket items listed for, for the out years. You know, with, with, huh? Yes, with the intention that, you know, next May, we'll tee it up again and, and move year two up to year one and keep, keep growing and adding on to it. So, that's, that's the plan at this point.
We're gonna probably do that after this.
Yes, we are. And then also, my, my goal is for the meeting in December. You know, we'll work this the rest of this month and November to get a final plan out there. But then, probably gonna need, she stepped out of room. Tina's wonderful help in all of her great way to share information. But, you know, we'd like to roll out our vision and our six pillars of priority and, you know, kind of, kind of figure out how to make a bit of a, maybe not a full splash, but, but the, definitely a, a way that we can introduce it and share our thoughts that we've been putting together.
It's good stewardship.
Alright. Yes. Okay, that's the end of my report. So, at this point, I, we're going to convene into executive session. Alright, do I close this?
Make a motion to, to-
I want to get this. Close this portion.
To recess into executive session.
Thank you. Do I have a, a motion to recess into executive session?
I'll make that motion to recess to executive session.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Alright, all in favor? Got the time?
Seventy-nine.
Okay, thanks for coming.